Okay, I will call to order the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I will ask Mr. Christopherson to please note the roll call. And at this time, I would ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation, um, individual with liberty and justice.
Hey, thank you, everyone. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. Should all have new agendas placed before you that came out this afternoon. The only changes are highlighted in orange. We have a few new hires, another resignation, some celebrate successes in the district. Have one item in new business in one executive session. So with those changes to the agenda, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Moving into dates to remember, September eighteenth is homecoming, early release day. October seventh is an early release day. October twelfth, Native American Day, no school that day. November fourth, early release day. November eleventh, Veterans Day holiday. November twenty-fifth is an early release. And November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh are holiday break for Thanksgiving, no school those days. Now we'll move into community input for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody present to offer community input for anything not on the agenda? Being nobody come forward, we will move into the consent agenda. Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following: approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings, consideration and approval of bills, approval and/or correction of the financial report. We have fourteen new hires to our district that require board approval to be covered by our workman's compensation plan. We have nine contracts here for board approval. Most of these are revised contracts. Miranda Holdrop, Skylar Holdrop, Stacy Wesby, David Wesby, Michelle Hotchkiss, Tori White, Sarah San, Angela Thomas, and then we have Lisa Beck, a teacher at our home, a salary of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, prorated to reflect October five, two thousand and twenty start date. We have three resignations for board approval. Tori Rinder is a pair educator here in middle school. Judy Schwartzman, concessions worker with eleven years service. And Lee Headblum, arena custodian, mail and deliveries, two-week service. We have a request to approve a sign on for northeast South Dakota Head Start preschool at the McKinley School Building. And then we have one open enrollment request, OE two thousand and twenty dash zero three for board approval. That is a consent agenda in its entirety. We can pass it with one motion, or if any board member would like to pull any item out for further discussion, we can do that, too.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now I'll turn it to Mr. Nebelsek as he celebrates his successes in our district.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. First of all, many of the congratulations have to do with personal families. Congratulations to Ann Larson and her husband on the birth of their daughter Rowan. Congratulations to Lacey Wilder and her husband Chad on the birth of their son Jake. Congratulations to Brandy Fitzgerald and her husband Keith on the birth of their son Kohan. Congratulations to the homecoming royalty and queen candidates, king and queen candidates, Bree Goos, Brooklyn Botel, Audrey Rubish, Haese, Kaylee Cos. King candidates are Tristan Cardona, Mariano Gonzalez Tovar, Tyson Lane, Sebastian Cardona, and Jalen Kerner. Congratulations to all of them. Thank you to everyone who's put together time in order to have the homecoming festivities this week and the parade at the end of the week. And thank you to the Washington four-five center would like, the Washington four-five center would like to thank the many business and community members who donated bag chairs for their students to be able to continue learning in an outdoor environment. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nebelsek. Moving into board reports, our first report is the time capsule. Last year, when we began doing renovations of our high school offices, they discovered a time capsule that the class of nineteen sixty-eight put there. You know, we have several members of that class here anxiously awaiting to see what's inside of it. So I am going to turn it to Mr. Wheeler and Mr. Lee as they were the time capsule committee members and however you guys want to present and open this.
Bring them up, right?
Yeah, we can have everybody come on up.
Come up on stage.
Earlier, well, they're coming on up just a little bit ago. I was over at Oval Ten West Place. He's a member of the class of sixty-eight and he looked at this thing and saw how it had been soldered together and had to take a, take a grinder to it and got it mostly open. But he gave me these tools to kind of pry at the rest of the way open. So we'll come on over here and do that.
Make sure they introduce themselves.
Craig, do you want to introduce the, or have everybody introduce who's on stage from the class?
Joan Bishop, stand forth.
Barb Boonsdale Peterson.
Kathy Thomas Ramzel.
Julie Rogers Ginner.
Becky Spalding Freeman.
Irma Johnston Wilson.
Wes Gaynor Gaynor.
Before we open it up, are there any bets on what's inside here? A newspaper? So we were pretty sure about that, okay. There we go. Okay. Okay. There we go. Oh. Stuck in there. There's one last paper.
Newspaper.
Anything to say, Irma?
Well, it's still heavy, yes, they still have some books in there.
Money?
Maybe. I haven't found any cash yet.
It is our yearbook.
No, it's?
It is. Oh, was that from sixty-six? It wasn't in the yearbook.
School board documents.
It's sixty-six, that's enough.
The budget.
Isn't it? What year does that say? Because sixty-eight wasn't done yet.
Class schedule.
Sixty-six.
Come on. Yes.
Moderate. Moderate.
That's it, okay. You guys want to look through this here?
Oh, absolutely.
So there's a, oh, there's a program from the cornerstone laying ceremony held on August twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-seven. And a public school directory of the district. Let's see here. Copy of the Daily Plainsman from February seventh, nineteen sixty-five.
I couldn't get a nineteen sixty-five.
Well, you know.
I think, oh, I think this must have, because there's another one from February ninth, nineteen sixty-five that says school plan approved in record vote. So I believe, so these are news stories about the building of the school.
Yeah, school. Yep.
And the important section of the comic section of the, of the. Is that all part of the same, maybe it's all part of the same one? The reports on the committee, consulting committee of the Huron School Survey, nineteen sixty-two. Report of the study committee on junior high school facilities, nineteen sixty-three. Yes.
No kidding.
And then a, well, it looks like an election mailer of information on the bond issue, encouraging people to vote yes on the bond issue, which was held on Monday, February eighth, must have been nineteen, nineteen sixty-five, nineteen sixty-five, yeah. There was a, appears to be, is this a class, is it a class schedule?
Yes.
It is, it's a class schedule with the month.
It was.
It was.
Absolutely.
It was awesome.
Got a copy.
Some days you had no classes and some days you had.
Okay, and then copies of the school budget and members of the Citizens Advisory Council, Board of Education, and other people involved. So.
In the building of the new school?
Yes.
So I wonder, I bet it was the board.
Yes.
Sounds to me like the board that put this together.
I agree. It looks like mainly documents put together by the board and the administration.
Who was on the board at that time?
Yes, I have this copy.
The Board of Education, at the time, was Dr. R.A. Buchanan, was chairman. James Venables was vice chairman. Dr. G.H. Chaffey.
Yeah.
Chaffey. Ms. Helen Buchanan.
Yeah.
And Harland Meyer.
I bet they put this together. They did. That's why we don't remember.
That's why, because, yeah, the board did it.
Yeah, cool. Very neat.
What is this? I have a question, is that just also information on the school? Yeah, I want to ask you this question.
Isn't that me? We're here for the new school.
So questionnaire, questions, yeah.
Right, that's, hold that up, oh, there she is. Be a toddler. I'm sorry, just a second.
Does that have a school or a list of students, or what is this?
No, that's the.
People endorse. People endorse.
No, I didn't think that. I said.
That's all, that's all. I know what I remember doing.
That's why, that's why. Thank you. We're all messaging each other, you know. That's why nobody could remember. Voters turned down bond issue one. Cool. They, yeah, they voted the pool down. We thought you had a pool, but they voted that down. Yeah. But they voted that one down.
Yeah, there's, in, in the, in this here, there's a shows and all, a swim pool alternate on the backside of the gym, so.
Oh, yes, that's right. I bet that got voted down. Yeah. And now.
That was an extra.
I have a question. Oh, this is a question. How much, how much time do we have to look at this?
Well, we, I think it'd be okay. We can take this stuff out, move it out into the.
I was gonna say, we can take it to any hallway where they can enjoy.
Yeah, I think we, we'll put it on a table out here in the commons.
Okay.
And then have plenty of time to look through it.
Glad you didn't hurt yourself.
Uh, me too. Oh, there is, oh, there is one yearbook in here at least, right?
Why don't you guys go ahead and take this stuff out.
From sixty-six.
Put it on the table out there.
Well, you're still, you're still in there, right? Let's find Becky's picture in there, that's right.
Tom Ford. Here.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for letting us do this.
You bet.
All right, well, that was very cool and exciting. That's a bit of good news, it was neat to see open. Okay, oh, we'll wait for David to get back up here. He can listen from there. I'll turn it to Mr. Christopherson for his business manager's report.
Okay, this evening, I have a report on the general fund. We are seventeen percent of the way through the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. We've collected three million, seventy-eight thousand dollars of revenue, which is fourteen percent of the budgeted revenue. This compares to two million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, or eleven percent for the same period last year. Today, the district has expended one million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, or eight percent of the budgeted expenditures, compared to one million, four hundred and twelve thousand, or seven percent for the same period last year. This number will begin to tick up faster now because teacher contract expenses will begin appearing in September, and then when we get to the end of the year, we have the triple expenses that show up in June when we expense out the contracts. And on the construction update for the high school, middle school, the construction walkthroughs were held on schedule on August eighteenth, and punch lists were developed and distributed to the various contractors and subcontractors. We, they are still working through the punch lists and still waiting for some things to arrive from manufacturers so that this project can be finished up, but there were not any major problems to report as a result of the construction walkthroughs. That's my report.
There any questions for Kelly? Okay, thanks, Kelly. Now we will turn it to Mr. Nebelsek for his superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, and again, good evening. I have several things that I want to cover this evening that are pertinent to everything that's going on. First off, I want you to know that there is a group that has put together a beautiful memorial rock for Mr. Basler, and at some point, that group may actually be here to visit with the details of how they would like that presented, but our recommendation for that memorial rock is that it follow the, the pattern of what we've done with the other coaches, et cetera, that have been honored. Mr. Basler was known across the state for his long jumpers, and so we're looking at an area out by the long jump pits where people would see that and remember him and his contributions to that for a long time to come. So I just wanted you to know that that has arrived, and they will be working with administration, et cetera, on getting a plan for presenting that and, and having him and his family honored at an appropriate time when they put that together. Second thing I'd like to share is a, the rest of them actually are, are pretty much COVID-related in different forms, but I want to share that tomorrow morning, the administrators are going to be discussing what we do with parent-teacher conferences. We've been incredibly happy with the limited amount of exposure that we have had to COVID as our students and staff have participated in, in the masking program, in the shielding program, in the distancing, and in the fifteen minutes consecutive. And at this time, we have had no spread of the virus that took place within the school. We've actually only had three cases identified that had tested positive as either a staff member or a student during the time of school, and appropriately notified the people when that happened, and most of those quarantines have now passed without incident. The issue with parent-teacher conferences is that one of our commitments was to limit the number of people on campus as much as possible so that the same students and teachers were coming on campus each day and therefore limiting any other access. On the other side, we do not want to be, we do not want to be isolated from our parents because parent relationships have been really, really important. And so we're looking at the possibility of Zoom addresses because the state has now become connected with the Zoom network for the different people that are part of the state's email system. We're looking at that possibility. We're looking at what, what is practical? Is it better to have appointments? And, and some people will choose to forego it this time if they've had decent communications electronically already. So I just wanted you to know that parent-teacher conferences is the next challenge that is coming up for us to, to work on. You may have heard the state has had quite a discussion among superintendents, the Department of Health, and the Department of Education in the past five or six days because the Department of Health has determined that they do not have the authority to quarantine students for fourteen days because they've been a close contact. And so we received a lot of information about that. School boards need to determine whether the close contacts are allowed to come to school or not allowed to school. I have purposely not brought anything before you because the Huron area schools have uniquely had the Operations Task Force as our guidory, guidance as to what works in our community, and there are several health officials that are involved in that. And in your plan, it talks about that the different thresholds will be run in front of that Operations Task Force. And so at this point, that's what I have been doing when it comes to close contacts and that type of thing. For instance, today, there was a question that I took before the group that said, if a member of a family is being tested, should the rest of the family be quarantined until that test comes back? And the health information says no, that you deal with known cases and they become primary contacts of a known case. They do not become primary contacts of a possible case. And so I'm just bringing you up to date that as other school boards are dealing with this, that my best recommendation is that we follow the CDC guidelines, the Department of Health guidelines, we work with our nurses, and we work with the task force, and we continue to make the best decisions that we can. I would share with you that the last four weeks have taught me that we have enjoyed great support, but we've also had very limited cases compared to other places. This is where it's going to get complicated in the future. What's going to get complicated in the future is when schools have to isolate eight, ten, twelve kids for two weeks who are completely healthy, but they have been identified as a close contact. And how long are we going to have the support of parents, et cetera, when it comes to daycare or when it comes to their children not being able to attend or not being able to compete in activities when they are healthy? The opposite to that is that is there a liability issue if they are a known close contact, and then we would wind up having a spread because we did not take precautions? So I want to compliment a lot of people that have worked very hard on this, that our combination of masking, our combination of shields, and our combination of, of running a close time now, this is what we're working on, to make sure that no group is together more than twelve to fourteen minutes, that all of those things are following a guideline, and I think that's why we're only dealing with three or four cases out of thirty-two hundred people that share these buildings, and that, that is remarkable. But I will keep you informed if there's something that we need to update. I, I read today the documents that I sent to you from the Council of School Attorneys so that you're reading the same information that I am. Right now, I hope that you are comfortable with continuing along the course of using the local task force in order to be as responsive as we can to what we're doing, how to keep kids safe, and how to keep as many of them involved in school as possible. And I'd yield in case there's any questions on that issue before I go to the next one. Okay, the, the, the next one I want to talk about has to do with distance learning, and we've been working, the cabinet's been working with me on forms that will bring a lot more clarity, and there's still a, a work in order this, this evening, but a lot more clarity to some things that have, have happened with distance learning that cause me great concern. The concern I have is that our faculty is going to wind up burned out on trying to be all things to all people as we have had numerous people that are distance learning for reasons that have nothing to do with COVID. And that's what I'm trying to get a handle on at this time. I believe that our entire faculty supports that if someone's out there and does not want their children interacting with others yet because of the pandemic, we are here to accommodate that, and we should be here to accommodate that. However, what we found is, is that some people are wanting distance learning and then working in an environment that involves many other people. Distance learning was not designed to accommodate that. Some people are distance learning and then wanting to take certain classes on campus because there's certain classes they can or cannot handle alone. The COVID plan did not call for that. Either you are isolated from others because of your own health, or you are comfortable being with others and you should be back in the normal routine of school. And the third thing is people participating in activities and then, and then wanting to have individualized education, where they come to some classes, they don't come to others, or they come to choir and they don't come to band, or they are in our sports programs without attending school. The distance learning put a lot of pressure on our teachers to be all things to all people, and, and it has become disheartening to me that I, I was completely wrong on a couple of things going into this, and I want to work hard in the next couple of months to correct those. For instance, I'm a believer that homeschool kids should be able to participate in our activities, and I still believe that. Because a homeschool child that lives in the district, their parents pay taxes, they prove they're doing work at home, we want them to participate, and many of them eventually become our students. The difference is, is they, the homeschool child does not ask for individual intervention and day-to-day teaching by us in order to isolate them from the others due to the COVID. And so if I had to do it again, and the documents we're working on will reflect that distance learning is not available to those who want to participate in our activities. Distance learning was a strategy in order to offset people who were worried about their children being exposed in a pandemic. So whether it's extracurricular, co-curricular, working abuses, those are all things that are a major concern. The final thing that is a major concern, which I want to address in the coming month, are distance learners who are not holding up their end of the deal. They're not doing their assignments, they're not attending class, they are truant. And so they checked out a, a, an iPad, and we basically haven't seen them since. And so we'll go through the process that, no, you, you have to be able to successfully do the distance learning, or you are truant from school. And so we need to crank down on all of those things. I welcome your perspective if I'm seeing something differently, but I speak on behalf of the teachers that it is taking everything they have to. The COVID plan did not call for that. Either you are isolated from others because of your own health, or you are comfortable being with others and you should be back in the normal routine of school. And the third thing is people participating in activities and then, and then wanting to have individualized education, where they come to some classes, they don't come to others, or they come to choir and they don't come to band, or they are in our sports programs without attending school. The distance learning put a lot of pressure on our teachers to be all things to all people, and, and it has become disheartening to me that I, I was completely wrong on a couple of things going into this, and I want to work hard in the next couple of months to correct those. For instance, I'm a believer that homeschool kids should be able to participate in our activities, and I still believe that. Because a homeschool child that lives in the district, their parents pay taxes, they prove they're doing work at home, we want them to participate, and many of them eventually become our students. The difference is, is they, the homeschool child does not ask for individual intervention and day-to-day teaching by us in order to isolate them from the others due to the COVID. And so, if I had to do it again, and the documents we're working on will reflect that distance learning is not available to those who want to participate in our activities. Distance learning was a strategy in order to offset people who were worried about their children being exposed in a pandemic. So, whether it's extracurricular, co-curricular, working abuses, those are all things that are a major concern. The final thing that is a major concern, which I want to address in the coming month, are distance learners who are not holding up their end of the deal. They're not doing their assignments, they're not attending class, they are truant. And so, they checked out a, a, an iPad, and we basically haven't seen them since. And so, we'll go through the process that, no, you, you have to be able to successfully do the distance learning, or you are truant from school. And so, we need to crank down on all of those things. I welcome your perspective if I'm seeing something differently, but I speak on behalf of the teachers that it is taking everything they have to teach the distance learners while they provide an education for 2,800 other kids in our school. And I am proud of the teachers that if it's a medical issue, they are glad to do it. But to have it be a convenience issue where people go out and do all these other high, highly social interacting things is, is really disheartening to the staff, and I want to defend them and do what I can to make it right. I'm open to any questions or comments on, on, on that one as well.
Just say that this is all something new. We have no history to look back on, on something like this, and it was all put together fairly quick, so you can't account for problems that may arise. You discover them like you obviously have, and then we take steps to correct these problems and try and make it better for our staff because we definitely don't want to overwork our staff.
Anything from anybody? That's the end of my report, other than the critical infrastructure, which I'll take in new business. So, if people have questions on other items, now would be the time. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Nevillesek. Do you have any questions for the superintendent?
Yeah, I had one question. I had someone come to me. It's been a long tradition for the, for the football team that when they win, they get to go and ring the bell at the stadium. And I know we're obviously in a COVID year, but with it being homecoming week, the question was, is there any way that if there is a Tiger win, that they could get over there and possibly ring the bell if there were any safety precautions that we could take to make that possible? So...
Well, we received correspondence from parents as well, and Mr. Roddick, Mr. Radke are working on a potential solution. So, the end result will probably be to accommodate parents' wishes on it, and so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the bad guy, and I'm going to explain some of the complications with the bell that spanned the 27 years that I've been here. The bell is not received well by our opponents. There are times when I was high school principal that I'd have to go stand by the bell, or else other teams would rush to ring it as a payback. It doesn't take place other places, and I know that it's near and dear to the hearts of, of longtime, of the longtime football community. It was not removed this year because of that. It was removed this year because the schools were asked to come up with specific strategies with the Activities Association in order to give us the best chance to have kids play. And so, for instance, there's been some hard feelings in volleyball, that why did the conference schools not do introductions in volleyball? And they felt that that was one way, not doing introductions was one way to reduce the number of informal chances that could cause the COVID spread. And yet, I can tell you in volleyball, it's caused a complication because they cannot identify who's playing what in order to get the positioning before all of a sudden the game starts. So, there's, I'm not a volleyball strategist, but there's some game strategy that's involved with the coaches once the introductions take place, and they have not taken place. The Activities Association was very specific in their instructions on football from the task force, and that was that people could not shake hands before or after, and that as soon as the games were completed, that we were supposed to keep crowds completely away from the student athletes. We were supposed to have the student athletes not shake hands, have the visiting athletes get to the locker room first, and then have the home athletes get to the locker room second. So, Mr. Radke's been making sure that the crowd did not go out on the field, that we followed that protocol, that we got the visitors in, and then we got the, and then we got the Huron Tigers in. I worry that we are clearly breaking protocol when everybody agrees to those things, and yet, we're gonna run down and ring a bell. So, what I saw this afternoon, we're probably gonna accommodate it anyway. This is one of those things that I know I'm repeating. The enemy's not the administrators, the enemy's COVID. And COVID has caused a lot of things to, to change, and there's been a harshness with some of it. But we'll have four administrators that have a very angry crowd as to why they can't go celebrate with the athletes while the athletes ring the bell. And then, we'll find out from the Activities Association whether we are in violation of the statewide COVID protocol that was put in place for football, that there'd be no ceremonies at the end, no shaking of hands, that we'd get kids back in the locker room so they could keep playing. But again, I, I'm a bit worn out to have enemies over this, and I, I do know that the, the bell in Huron takes on a life of its own. One of the things I, I've written is that the bell is, you know, the bell is okay, it's just that we gotta know that, that it's received differently by, by different people. But this is not the time to debate whether we should or shouldn't have a bell. This is the time to debate whether we are following the COVID protocol. And the thing that I would ask people to be a little forgiving of administrators is that the focus is on making sure that kids get to play their games. And that's what, that's what drives some of those decisions, is what, what are all the things that we can do so kids get to play their games? Mr. Radke, if you have a different perspective on that, but I believe as of this afternoon, Mr. Roddick's gonna try to accommodate it if the Activities Association does not think it's a violation of COVID. Okay? Okay?
Any further questions for Mr. Nevillesek?
All right, thank you, sir. Good report. Moving into old business then. First item of old business is Policy CDB, the Huron School District Organizational Chart. This is our second reading and up for approval, so I would entertain a motion to approve Policy CDB.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve Policy CDB. Is there any further discussion? Any and none, we will vote. All those in favor of approving Policy CDB will say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Hey, motion carries. Next item of old business is the adoption of the 2021 budget. We have that copy of the budget summary in our board packet. Kelly, do you have any comments to add to what we have here?
I think all I would say is that there, there aren't any changes to the second preliminary budget that was reported. By law, we, we presented one at that first meeting in May, not knowing where state funding was going. And then, once state funding settled in, and we got into July, and there wasn't a special session, and we have our 2% cost of living increase, I presented the second version of that preliminary budget that had all of that in there, and no changes have been made to that.
Hey, thanks, Kelly. David, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna ask if you have any indication as to where student count will be? Is it gonna be on target for where we planned in this budget that we're gonna adopt?
I checked late last week, we were about 40 below where this budget is.
About 40 students. Forty students below what was used to budget this?
We were budgeted for 2,860, and we were about at 2,820. We're 10 days away from counting. Last Friday in September, we'll, is when what really counts.
Hey, I'm, this time I'm gonna ask for a motion to adopt the 2020-2021 budget.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to adopt the budget for this year. Is there further discussion, questions? Hey, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor of adopting the budget will say aye.
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 Posed? Hey, motion carries. We'll move into new business now. Our first item of new business is the tax levy request. We have that information in our board packet. Kelly, do you have any comments on the tax levy requests?
It's a pretty standard request. The general fund levies are all set by the legislature as maximums. Special education levy is also set by the legislator, legislature, and that's a maximum. Our bond redemption is $1,423,000. That pays for all the elementary construction, the $22 million bond issue, that is unchanged from year to year. And then, there's capital outlay of $3,766,000. That is a maximum also that was just updated by the State Department of Revenue late last week. They project Huron to have the 0.6% growth. New capital outlay law is 3% growth per year. So, that's a 3.6% increase for last year's maximum.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. I will entertain a motion to approve the tax levy request.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve the tax levy request. I'll open up for any discussion at this time?
Kelly, do you know last year, we made the decision that we, we lowered the, I believe it was the capital outlay fund by $500,000 to give taxpayers a break with the terrible year that we were having? Do you know how much it's gonna go up? You said 3% increase in the capital outlay, so it's, is that going up more than, obviously more than $500,000 this year? That's not in the budget, the reduction that we had last year?
Right. The $500,000 is in there, and then the 3.6% is about $135,000.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hey, seeing none, we will vote on the tax levy request. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Hey, motion carries. Next item of new business is designation of school district staff as critical infrastructure workers. I am going to turn it to our superintendent so he can bring us up to date on this.
Thank you. I've written to the entire staff, so they are aware a couple of weeks ahead of time as to where we were headed with this. What I want to explain is that if you designate the entire staff as critical infrastructure workers, what that means is, is that if they are a, identified as a close contact, and the school district wants them to continue to come to work by the provisions of distance and masks and shields, et cetera, and the employee wants to continue to work because they're perfectly healthy, this gives us the authority to do that. What it does not mean is that an unhealthy person with any kind of symptoms can be at work. You are not allowed to do that. It does not allow someone who's been tested positive to come to work. So, repeating for the benefit of the audience, because I know you folks study the, the packet and the preparation, this allows, this designation allows the healthy workers who've been named as a close contact to have us monitor their symptoms, and if they're healthy, and if we have all the distance protocols in place, ask them to continue to work, and then it is their choice to continue to work rather than take leave. And, and so, I do want the minutes to reflect that we are not removing the employee's choice of working in the conditions that they've been a, a close contact.
Mr. Nevillesek, any questions for the superintendent? David?
Yes. I had a parent reach out to me and ask, they were concerned about if a teacher is designated as a close contact, and they are then teaching in the classroom, will parents at all be notified? Would if a, because would a parent then have the option to decide, do I want to have my student in a room with a person who's been identified as having a close contact even with the current safeguards in place?
The short answer to that, and then I'll walk through it, is no. They would, would not be notified. We would have our, our medical people and our nurses screening to make sure they were perfectly healthy. We would make sure that they were distanced from everyone, masked as they have been, et cetera. But, but no, we, we do not, we do not have the authority to notify that we have a teacher teaching or an administrator leading that has been identified as a close contact. The, the, that, that would not, that would not be an option for us to do that. So, no, directly, that's, that's where it's at.
Thank you. And then, a second question was, would this affect any time off allowed under the CARES Act? It's my understanding that if someone is a close contact, they can take time off, get paid time off, that doesn't count against their sick leave, and they first get a few weeks under the CARES Act.
Kelly, I'd yield to you to explain the government-imposed quarantines and how that works, and if this has any impact on that at all.
On the leave provisions?
Right, under the provisions of, of designated as, as a critical infrastructure worker.
I don't believe the designation really has anything to do with it. It's just part of the family's first coronavirus relief act, that if a employee is tested positive or is quarantined, that triggers 80 hours of sick leave on top of anything else that that employee has, or leave. That's kind of a, it's a one-time shot. You only have 80 hours. You don't have 80 hours every time you get quarantined. You have 80 hours once. And from what I understand, that expires on December 30th unless it's extended by some action of the federal government. That's the rules we're operating under right now, and we have extended that leave as needed to our employees.
So, to clarify that then, if a staff member is designated as a close contact, don't have any symptoms, they haven't tested positive, but they're a close contact, they can be quarantined and use that 80 hours of time. Is that accurate?
Right.
And so, our designation of them as an essential worker does not change that staff member's ability to choose to go into quarantine and use that 80 hours?
Correct.
There you go, thank you.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Nevillesek? Not, I would entertain a motion to designate a school district staff as critical infrastructure workers.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to designate school district staff as critical infrastructure workers. Is there any further discussion? Hey, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
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 Posed? Hey, motion carries. Final item of new business is a request to use Tiger Stadium. The Huron Youth Football is requesting the use of Tiger Stadium for a sixth-grade football game on October 15th. Huron Youth Football understands they need the board's approval if the district is still operating in yellow on October 15th.
That's right. This is a COVID issue, and any outside uses need to be run in front of the board when we're in yellow. This is borderlineous, whether it's an outside use or not, because it's our kids using our facility. It's something I strongly recommend that we do. It's a part of our development of our programs, and we're grateful for all the volunteers who do it. But because of COVID, we felt we should follow the plan and bring that past you so that if we're in yellow, they can go ahead and plan their game.
Absolutely, it's a good idea. We want the kids playing football if they can. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the use of Tiger Stadium for the sixth-grade football game.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I had a question. In the past, have we operated like concessions during events like this? Is that something that we've ever done or looked at doing, or do we let the outside organization do that? I don't remember.
I don't recall if...
I don't think that's ever came up.
I think it's been part of a football game one time too or something. Maybe they played before the football, or maybe it was before a soccer game. Can't remember.
I believe when there've been, Kelly, stop me if I'm wrong, but I believe when there've been like Nordby basketball or volleyball things, that those volunteer groups have run their own concessions as a part of making a go of it. So, I don't think the school's concessions have ever been a part of any of that, that, how you'd understand it, because I don't remember us having...
I think that is correct.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I'll bring up one more thing. We didn't get it on this agenda, but we are scheduled to host state... We didn't get it on this agenda, but we are scheduled to host state soccer at Tiger Stadium on October 17th. High School Activity Association is, we're thinking we're not going to allow that. We need to let them know rather than wait another two weeks, but we didn't get that on the agenda. And we'll have it on the next agenda for official action, but I think we would be prudent to let them know now if there are concerns.
We had explained that we were going to be state host for things, but you're right, we should add it on here, just like the youth football, in order to designate that we want that activity in town. You're right. So do you want to, I mean, I see their general consensus now, and they approve it in two weeks. Is that okay?
That's all I was looking for.
Okay.
Anybody have any concerns about state soccer taking place? Have your consensus, and we'll put it on the next agenda for approval. Is there any further discussion on the sixth-grade football game? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on sixth-grade football using Tiger Stadium on October 15th. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. That completes our agenda. We have one item for executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codeified Law 1-25-2, subsection 1, discussing qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee. I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for this item.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, we'll take a short recess and reconvene in executive session.